Well, good morning, good evening. Good morning, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee meeting and good evening to all the people at home watching on cable. It's now seven o'clock or 7:01 and like to begin our meeting for September 22nd, 2020. First on the meeting is any open public comment? I didn't think I would see any here tonight, but I did. Our community inbox had no submissions between our last meeting and to this date. So I have nothing to report to the public or any of the committee members about the community inbox. So, thank you. 7:05, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes. We have a couple. We have one for the regular meeting and one for executive meeting, both for September Any comments on the September 2nd regular minutes? That's the first one I have pulled up, the regular minutes.
I had no changes to the regular minutes. I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2020.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Brent. Just to make a note that Michelle Raymond is not here yet this evening, so we have four members in attendance. We have a motion and a second. Any more comments? All in favor of approving the general minutes for September 2nd? One, two, three, four, four zero. We have it, thank you. Any motion, discussion about the executive session minutes?
I don't, and I would move to accept them as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Tina, motion by Brent. Any further comments? Good. All in favor of approving the executive session minutes? Thank you. And a motion to release the executive session minutes?
I'll make a motion to release the executive session minutes of September 2nd.
Tina, motion, second by?
Second.
Rob, thank you. All in favor of releasing the executive session minutes? Four zero, thank you. Both executive sessions voted for four zero. Thank you very much. Agenda. Got to go back, huh? Sorry. My fault. Next is our teaching and learning highlight to begin the night with. I'm just so excited for us all to have the music department here, so please.
I'm really excited that we're getting back to our teaching and learning highlights, too. And we have a number of people here in the audience that are going to be presenting. I'll first introduce our two fabulous drum majors, Mary Claire Ernst and Nicole Corkery. And when we think about starting off the school year, it's so different, but it did not stop them, along with our fabulous music educators, as far as being able to continue with marching band. And there were so many discussions about so many fundamentals that need to take place and be able to go forward, and they have been so creative, and you're going to see and hear that this evening, but also in the audience, Ms. Kami Tidoldi, our director of music. We have Mr. Aaron Bush, Ms. Jenny Greenleaf, and Mr. Donnie Albro that are here with them as well. So, how do Mary Claire and Nicole, do you want to come up to the table? You can still socially distance. Have you step up this way? And I know you have a video that you're going to be sharing with us this evening.
You can push the chairs over a little.
Just push out a little bit, and then we'll just move the microphone.
There we go.
Three roll steps. Get three roll steps here.
So I know, just talking with both of you, you've just been so creative in what you've done, so I'm so excited for you to share with us, although it's looked different, what you've been able to do.
Okay, so if you guys have the video pulled up, so I guess we'll start off. So for this year, unfortunately, we were not able to have our traditional virtual marching band in person.
No, no, slide the microphone. You can stay there. I just want to make sure, I want to make sure the public can hear you. Thank you. Thank you. It's good, yeah, it's easy slide. Yeah, slide it toward you.
Is that good?
I think so.
Okay. I'll just briefly repeat. So unfortunately, we're not able to meet in person for our virtual marching band this year, but we wanted to still continue with our tradition that we have in our Foxborough Music Program. So one step that we took to provide the specific fundamentals for these kids is to create a series of videos demonstrating the marching fundamentals. This is one of about five or six videos that we created, and we created this for the purpose of the students to use as a reference. So one of the challenges that we faced with this virtual experience is not having that one-on-one, face-to-face interaction. So by creating these videos, we hoped that having it and hopefully if we weren't able to explain something over the course of the virtual marching band, they could look back, refer to these videos, and hopefully use those to their own advantage. So if you want to play a little bit of that, you can see what we did. Also, video credits to Dominic St. Pierre.
And I'm Nicole.
And I'm Mary Claire.
And we're your drum majors.
In this video, we'll be going over some marching band basics. At the beginning of every marching band practice, either me or Mary Claire will blow our whistle, and that signifies everyone to go to the ready, and this is what that will look like. To the ready. So as you can see, Mary Claire is now in the ready. She is looking six feet in front of her with her eyes focused down. She has her hands clasped together. Her left hand is over her right. She has her thumbs placed in, and they're right above her belt buckle. You can see her feet are right down below her shoulders, and her posture is very poised. Her shoulders and her legs are perfectly above each other, and she looks very professional. Okay, so now we're going to have Nicole demonstrate how to get from the ready to the attention position. So go to the ready.
All right, I think that's probably a good sample.
It's fun to watch yourself, right?
Oh, geez.
Oh, that was great. That was good. That was good.
It's good.
Okay. And we also have a nice PowerPoint of some images to show you guys, and we'll be explaining a little bit of background. So if we could have the PowerPoint. Yes, thank you. Okay, so basically, the job of the drum majors is to not only lead the band, but we also need to lead the entire camp. So we needed to plan everything, every single minute of the camp. We have planned out on that sheet right there. And usually, the camp takes place over an entire day, but we only had one hour, and it was online. So we had to break it up into small portions, 10 or 15-minute portions of different activities that would normally take about an hour, and we wrote down exactly what we were going to do every single day on this sheet. So as you can see, it's very marked up. That is my beautiful handwriting. You can see in the top-left corner, I wrote "Encourage Underclassmen." This is one of our big fundamentals, our big principles of the Foxborough Music Program. So something that we did that was really a challenge virtually was trying to keep them, you know, like encouraged and enthusiastic and excited for the school year and for marching band. So what we did was we incorporated the section leaders. We used the activities that we would typically use as far as, for example, Form A was one of the activities that we used. We have it written out on the next slide. Yes, also on the next slide. You can click to that slide. So this is just form a nut, crack a nut, it's got some hand motions with it. So we have a bunch of activities that we had planned. For the most part, we were still able to execute these activities, and with the enthusiasm, high participation of the section leaders, we saw enjoyment of the underclassmen. It was a good time. Everyone was having a good time. I think the staff was having a good time as well.
Yes, definitely.
So that was, that was good. However, one of the challenges was we still found ourselves having a gap of time that we couldn't fill with the physical activity that we would have in person. So what we did was create a cahoot. This is something that teachers use in school as well, and we actually interviewed some of our section leaders, older students, for personal information about themselves and had people guess about them. So not only did this allow students to get to know their older leaders because they're not able to see them in person, it was also a good interactive way to get them involved. So we thought that that would be a fun way for them to go ahead and interact with us. So another thing that we did, so as you can see, we got some, I got some pretty high, bright blue socks on. Mary Claire has- I'm wearing, they're slot socks. Slot socks. So we had a wacky sock day. So this also encouraged participation and allowed students to, you know, it gave them an outlet to have some fun instead of just opening up a computer. And sitting behind a screen also creates fear for students who are unaware or unfamiliar with something. So we were hoping that this would create a fun and friendly environment. Participation was high. Students were so excited to show us their socks. They had some pretty cool socks as well. Definitely. And another thing you'll notice in this picture is our setup of equipment. So Nicole and I had this tripod set up so that we could get a better view of our area. I have my computer right there. It's all set up on a table, and you can't really see it in this picture, but the next slide, it's pretty much the same picture. You can see we had cones in the background just to help students see where we were marching for our demonstrations. And another issue that we had to work around, yet another issue with the online setting, is that we only had a little square space where you could be seen on the camera. So it was pretty hard for some students to find an area where they could be seen the entire time when they're participating. So we set ours up so that students could see clearly what they should be doing, even if we can't see it on their screens and in their little, their little square on the screen. Just one more thing that I remember from that slide before. You'll notice, I apologize. You'll notice that we were wearing the same shirt. So throughout camp, we tried to wear the same shirt as well as the section leaders. So this is a small little thing that we tried to do for the younger students, to try and identify someone with a section leader position. For the most part, these younger students don't know us. They don't know our names unless they see it on the screen. So by wearing these shirts, if a younger student has a question, oh, look, they're all wearing the same shirt. I can use this little chat icon if I don't want to say it out loud. I can chat them directly. I can chat the staff directly, or I can chat the drum majors directly. And here we have a little screenshot of our WebEx call. You can see everyone was posing and waving. Another challenge that we faced with the online setting was we couldn't see anyone if we were back away from the screen, so we had to take turns with one person, like scrolling through all the different squares of video while the other was demonstrating or calling some commands. And it was hard sometimes because WebEx sometimes would lag or my Wi-Fi would go down because we're at my house. But I think we did a pretty good job working around the technological limitations. And on this next screen, we just have everyone doing some jumping jacks for a warm-up. We have a few jumping jacks at the beginning of every single day. Get people warmed up and ready to march. I think that's it, and I think that's it. Thank you for listening.
Any questions for the drum majors? Well done. Thank you very much for their presentation. Yeah, really, hey, Joe.
I don't, it's not a question, but I am, one, just really proud of you guys because it's, you solved problems, you tackled, you know, technical challenges, you found creative solutions, you created a community around this, which is really what we want all of our, you know, anybody coming through Foxborough Public Schools to be able to do as they go through the school. So you guys are just like real examples of this in a difficult time. So as a school committee member, as a member of our Foxborough, as a parent of kids in Foxborough Schools, whatever, I am really just proud of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, wonder.
Great job. It's great being an event-
Right? Oh, Michelle, sorry.
Michelle Raymond, I was just going to say, great way to be innovative, and I really like and appreciate how you were trying to figure out ways to include the freshmen or the new kids, because that is the big challenge. It's hard enough for kids who have already been through the system, but having new kids kind of coming in, and I know that they really appreciate that. So thank you very much, and thank you, staff, for helping to assist all of this. It's a great job. Fantastic.
Brent?
How, how was attendance and participation in the underclassmen in your, you know, as leaders? How do you view, how do you view that? Do you feel like you got the numbers you wanted?
I think that we got the numbers that we wanted. I mean, we honestly didn't know what to expect, but lots of kids did attend, and I'd say the results were very good. We actually just started this past week here at school, and we saw the kids marching for the first time in person, and there were some significant results and improvement.
Nice. What surprised you?
Attention to detail. Yeah. I think that, I think that they were so dedicated to, to improving. They wanted to improve, and it was so evident in the way that they were marching, how they were listening, how they were attentive to what we were saying to them. And that was so beautiful because it, you can't really see that virtually, and then that transition from teaching them the principles of the Foxborough Music Program and then seeing them being applied in person was fantastic.
Well, thank you for expecting that of them. Truly. I mean, I think that's a gift, to keep your expectations high and to also, same for our faculty, to keep the expectations and the opportunity high for people. So I appreciate you for just sticking with that in an year where it would have been easy simply to say, eh. So thank you for putting in the extra time.
Yeah, I just, I want to echo what everybody else has said. I mean, everything you've done has been so impressive, and being a drum major is a very hard job in a normal year, and this is anything but a normal year, and you guys have really thought outside the box. And I think those videos are fantastic, and probably going forward, even when there is regular marching band in person. I know my son, you know, did marching band for four years, and I think as a freshman, he would have found those videos really helpful, you know, when he was home and, because it's hard to learn how to march as a freshman, and if you've never done it before. And that's just tremendously helpful, and it just shows your dedication to what you're doing and to your fellow students. So thank you, and I really wish we were going to see you on a Friday night this fall out there on the field, but I know you're working hard, and we will see you at some point, so.
That's great.
One way or the other, right?
So I'm just going to pull it down so I can be clear. So I want to, I think I want to understand one more piece, because I think you've explained it well. But I think your teaching was marching technique, and was there also music rehearsal involved in some of it? I mean, I know music rehearsing digitally is not a simple thing either, right?
So our portion that we did specifically was the one hour of marching. Then they had about like a 15-minute break, and then we transitioned to the music staff where Mr. Bush and Ms. Greenleaf and Mr. Albro taught the specifics for the pieces that we're learning.
Excellent, excellent. And I want to repeat for the people that are paying attention, some of the first slides that came up on the screen was your lesson planning and your design for the instruction of the kids as well. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So you knew your responsibilities and what the, what the end goal was for you to accomplish in that short period of time. I'm very jealous, and Kami knows, I think your staff knows that it was 37 years ago for me when I had to prepare all summer for the marching band camp in that same parking lot. So I remember the emotion and the excitement, nervousness and challenge, but I also remember the responsibility. And I, and I'm really proud of you for articulating the responsibility, really. It means a great deal to really understand that your responsibility for the younger kids and the leadership of your squad leaders for their, the younger students and theirs as well, that's your full gamut of responsibility. So thank you for taking that on. Thank you for being a part of it. It's all encompassing. The commitment and the responsibility is all encompassing, so thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Did they have video cameras 37 years ago?
Did they what?
Had video cameras 37?
Didn't have video cameras. We, I remember the books, and I remember taking notes, you know, from George Parks.
He's an artist.
George Parks, so. No video cameras. Yeah, I'd like to see it. It'd be very interesting.
It's all done on copper plate.
Yeah, yeah. I had a big hat, though. They don't get the big hats anymore. I had a Q-tip.
We still have the hat.
Yeah, you still got the hat, right? Yeah.
On special occasions.
Yep.
Next time you're here, bring it.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Yeah, please, please. Yeah, any of the, any instructor, come on forward if you would. You might have to shift seats. I just-
It's fine, I'll just do this. I'm only going to be here a second.
Teaching is really hard. Online teaching is even harder, and being a high school student and an online teacher is near impossible. But these two fine young women exemplified excellence in preparation and teaching, and in my opinion, they are the finest example of what a high school student in Foxborough should be. And that's represented in every student in their ensemble. They are shown so much respect and admiration because how can you not love them?
Thank you. Thank you.
Well said. I would just say, watching you ladies, I've known you since you were little, and watching you, I'm just so impressed with your maturity, your sense of responsibility, and as Mr. Pearson said, your leadership. And I think we're here to teach you academics, and your music teachers are here to teach you music, but I think, you know, from these people, you've learned leadership, and you've taken it to a place that no one would expect for your age, to see a lesson plan like that. And the first thing that caught my eye was encourage underclassmen.
Yeah.
And that speaks volumes to me about what you know about us as a community and how you keep that community going. So just, I, yeah, the sense of pride, I got a little teary, I'm not going to lie. Like, it was, I was just really proud of you guys. It's amazing. You should be really proud of yourselves.
Thank you.
I'm not going to say much because they literally said it all, so I was like, thanks, guys. But, you know, so proud again of the work that they've done in rising to the challenge, and I, you know, I hate to say it again, but unprecedented times and things that have never been done before, and they rose to the challenge and made it happen. So we're so proud of them and the work that they did, and I think realizing, you know, the community, like you said, the community is used to seeing us on Friday nights at football games. Like, that must be what they do. They just go out and they walk around the field, but there's more to it than that. So that, that's why it was really important for us to maintain the integrity of our marching band curriculum and find a way to adapt and make it happen. So they rose to the challenge. The music staff didn't blink an eye when we, when I said, hey, guys, I'm sorry, we got to go virtual. And they just, they just said, okay, we're doing it, and they put their heads together and made it happen. So kudos to the music staff and Mary Claire and Nicole. Awesome. Thank you for having us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Well said. Thank you. Thank you.
I think they have something for you, too.
Oh, yes, we have Foxborough Music Masks.
Yay.
We can pass them out if you're comfortable.
If you guys are comfortable with that, yeah.
Well, that's how. Thank you.
I really wanted one of those.
We're actually wrapping them right now.
Yep. And if someone at home wanted to buy one, would they just, you know, get in touch with you?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I may have to fight back for this.
Yeah, they're so cool.
Yeah, they're nice.
They're really nice, too. They look really nice. Thank you, girls.
You're welcome.
Wear it with pride.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for taking time out this evening. Thank you to the staff for being here to support the students. Kami said it great. The endeavor for the music staff to teach, big, 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 big shoes to fill, but you guys got it. So thanks so much for keeping it alive and making it happen at such a high level, really. Thank you, staff.
Fantastic job.
Yeah, really, great. Great job. Well, good. Thank you. And you don't have to sit here all night. Thank you.
You don't have to tell them to quit.
You've got to get that.
Hi, ladies.
Good night.
Thank you.
Job, girls.
Thank you. Great, what a great highlight. Wow, is that cool? Education is working. We're doing it every day, so. Yeah, very nice. They got the mask work. There you go. Next on the agenda is Dr. Burdos and Dr. Mello with a back-to-school update.
So we're back, and we have students in our buildings, and it has been fantastic. It really has energized all of us to see all of our students come back, whether they are here on a Monday or a Tuesday or a half-day at elementary. It really has brought tremendous joy. I really don't know how, any, any other way to describe it, because not having our students here for the last six months and to see the buses roll in and to see them walk into the doors, they were excited from our youngest learners, our pre-K, all the way up to our seniors in high school. And they said they were really excited to be back. You could see it in their eyes, and it was really a smooth opening for all five of our buildings. And all of the work that was done that you heard about at the last meeting to prepare the buildings and all of the safety and all of that, it really made a big difference, and people came in and teachers and staff. Of course, there's going to be anxiety as we had our 10 days, and Dr. Mello will talk about that in just a second, but you have that anticipation. And once the students walk through the door, you could see that visibly settle down with our faculty and staff. And with each day, and now that we're in our second week, we're, we're already into a new kind of routine, but it really has been smooth. And from buses and dismissals and coming in through multiple entrances and exiting through multiple exits, it really has been smooth. We've had a lot of really positive feedback from our parents and working with us, whether it's at arrival or dismissal, getting the buses in and looking at the times, and even at the ahern, I can tell you, we were at about 11, 12 minutes, and today we were at eight minutes as far as with dismissal. So it's really been smooth, and all of the principals have, have said the same thing, and the kids have been fantastic when we think about wearing masks. They really have not skipped a beat. So that's been great. And as far as some other updates with athletics, athletics started on past Friday, and that has been taking place, and our coaches and our students have been doing such a great job. We have a number of safety precautions, obviously, that are in place, even things such as QR codes for each of the fields, so we know when athletes are on the field, so if we need to go back. So even just since Friday, when we instituted that, we had over 600 entries. So they come in, they scan their QR code, so we know who's there, at what time, and on what field. And that has been, you know, an added piece. We've done some added pieces as far as students with the bathrooms of the concession stand, so if they need to change, it's one at a time to be able to change right afterwards. The athletic training office has been moved out there, so then that way students aren't coming back in the building. And also, too, as far as like with the track and the fields, no one's allowed on the track and field during practice. That's part of the MIAA guidelines. And if we've had anyone out there, Joe Cusack has gone out there, and people have been really respectful and have left. So that part's been really good. The only thing that we, we'd like to continue to say to any students or adults when we think about like the booth playgrounds and looking over the basketball court, we can't control that when we have community members that are coming, but we just want to continue to remind people that we are taking all of these safety precautions and putting all these protocols in place, and we can control that during the time that they're here with us, but we can't do that outside. So we just really ask for people to continue to follow all the safety guidelines and protocols so people can continue to be in school and to play the sports in the new way that it's being held, but to do that in a way that we'll be able to continue. So that, that part's really important. We will be holding a couple of scrimmages in the coming week as far as with field hockey and soccer. That's going to allow us to see how to run an event, make sure we have appropriate staffing, that we have all of the pieces in play that we need for the, all of the safety protocols and procedures and then, and staffing as well. And that will be field hockey on the 29th at home, and then soccer on the 30th with boys in Canton and girls at home. So that's just a scrimmage again, to kind of trial and to go through. As far as any other information when it comes to back-to-school and health updates, Ms. Rosenberg will be talking about that in a, in a few minutes. But I did want to mention before, Dr. Mello talked about a little bit of our 10 Days of Professional Development, an update on our technology devices. So as you know, they've been delayed, and we've been waiting for a shipment date, so we just received word, and we have to continue to remind ourselves that this could be fluid, but at this point, the ship date that we just received was October 9th. So, that would be freight, air freight, and then, so we have to think about seven to 10 days. And once they arrive, you're having to image 2,600 devices. So, as far as rollout to students, it's looking towards the end of October, but we were really pleased before we had heard it was more towards the end of October as far as a, a ship date. So, October 9th is our latest, and that was really encouraging for us to hear. So, other than that piece, the, I wanted to just mention that our remote Wednesdays, so we have another one tomorrow, we did have, as to be expected, some bumps in the road as far as students logging on. There were a number of reasons for that. Some of it had to do with registration. If a parent had filled out incorrect information through the registration process, some of it had to do with own internet connectivity at home, some had to do with passwords. So, we're working through that. We hope that we see tomorrow with middle school and high school, that we see improvement there. But at the same time, we understand that everyone's connectivity, Wi-Fi at home is going to be different. So, if they can't see everyone at once, it could be on their end. We're continuing to work with families handing out devices, the laptop, not the laptops, the desktops to families in need every day, those that have not had access to the internet with the Comcast program to get that information out to them because that's $9.99 a month. And at the same time, work with anyone that is needing a possible hotspot in the meantime after they've gone through the Comcast. So, they need to go through the Comcast program first and then if we need to hold over to tide, then we're working with families that way, too.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Please, yeah.
Dr. Berdus, I know I saw an email yesterday about the J.C.'s being a liaison.
Yes, thank you.
For those who want to donate computer devices to the school system. I didn't know if you wanted to speak to that.
Thank you for that reminder, yes. So, when we think about this community being so supportive, after we sent out the update as far as with the devices and information, had a number of people reach out to say, I have an older laptop, or I have an older tablet that I would like to donate if it would meet, you know, the specifications and, you know, what are they? To be able to take that on with our staff, because you have to remember our technology staff not only serves the schools, but serves the town as well, to be able to take all of that in, we just didn't have the capacity. But the J.C.'s, being such a community, you know, organization and always willing to jump in and to help, they're going to facilitate so that communication that went out yesterday is an email address. If you have a device, it listed the different specs and you can email them and donate that and then we'll see what we have and then be able to send those back out to families in need.
It's really wonderful of the J.C.'s.
It's a, it was such, such a wonderful, you know, gesture for them to be able to do that because, you know, you, you don't know what you're going to get. It could be a lot, it could be a little, but to be able to facilitate that, I think it just, again, it really highlights the organization that they're for the community.
Yeah, with our IT department stretched as thin as they are right now because they're, you know, hugely in need in our, our school system and also on the town side. So, it's a, it fills a big gap. So, that's, that's very helpful. There was one other thing before we leave, devices. I know in the registration process, there's been some discussion about the insurance policy for the new devices, and I, I believe you wanted to mention that as well.
Yes. So, in this, in your registration process, it talks about how you can pay $40 for coverage for damage to your device. It also says in there, you won't be invoiced until the devices come in and, and when they do, will, and if someone selects yes, that I'd like to have that insurance for the device, it's $40. They'll be invoiced at the time that the devices come in. They'll be able to pay through check, they'll be able to pay through credit card, but again, it provides an insurance policy. I don't know, Bill, if you had anything else to add to that piece?
Yeah, I mean, and, and so basically, the, the district itself will be administering the plan itself. And what we're hoping to do is leverage my school bucks as a way of paying so that would make it easier to, you know, program parents are used to because of the food service side, but it does have another side that if we actually tag a bill to it, you could pay directly for that bill as well. So, that would put that in place. And quite, and it, and it's, it's, the intent there is, we know we're dealing with young children, accidents can happen, but, you know, I don't think any parent wants to have to pay to replace a laptop. So, like any insurance, that's basically what this will do is, is either fix it or replace it as, as we need to.
It is optional, right?
Totally optional.
And it wouldn't, you're not gonna have to pay it again until you have the device in hand, so.
Correct.
Just, there was a little confusion about that in the parent community, so.
But, but I will say, and in the documents that were going out, it also states that the parent is responsible for the device.
Oh, yeah.
So, if the device is, is damaged, the parent who doesn't take the insurance is basically gonna be responsible for the cost.
Which is no different than a textbook.
Correct.
For years, we've handed out textbooks to students and they have five or six textbooks.
Mm-hmm.
And textbooks aren't cheap either. So, it's the same situation as a textbook.
Exactly.
Yeah, very good. Any other questions for, since you asked a question for Dr. Berdus and her update? I know Dr. Mello still would like to speak a little bit about the PD upfront, too, as well.
Those were mine, thank you. Thank you, Tina, for those reminders.
Thank you.
Sure, just to talk a little bit about our 10 Days of Professional Development. As you remember, Commissioner O'Reilly had put aside those 10 days to help teachers prepare. So, if I were to summarize our professional development, I would say it was prioritized. We prioritized safety, we prioritized protocols, and we prioritized technology and pedagogy of remote learning. They, it was personalized, so in your packet, you'll see just a few of the different iterations depending on people's roles in the district. They had very personalized professional development opportunities. Everyone from, you know, world language to educational assistance to special educators to guidance counselors. And it was purposeful. Really, we had dual sort of outcomes that we were hoping for. We wanted to prepare people for this hybrid teaching experience, but at the same time, we wanted to prepare them should we have to go full remote. So, really, a lot of planning, a lot of flexibility went into creating these opportunities for people so that they weren't overloaded of 10 days of just constant learning. There was time to collaborate professionally with colleagues within content areas, within grade levels, with their department heads, with their curriculum directors, with their administrators. There was times for a question and answer. We built in lots of on-demand opportunities. For example, after the safety training, everybody in the district, everybody, food service, bus drivers, teachers, custodians, everyone participated in a wonderful safety training that Jen Rosenberg put together. It was about a 45-minute video that people watched, which was followed by a quiz to make sure that they took away the most salient points. We wanted to make, that was really important to us to make sure that everybody had the takeaways from it. And then we scheduled by level question and answer time with Jen and the nursing staff so people could ask any remaining questions. And we did that really quickly, that was after our, our first day. And then on the very last day, we had a similar opportunity. So, we wanted to sort of bookend the experience to make sure people left with their questions being answered. So, for example, elementary teachers had opportunities by grade level to log in with Darlene Reed, our technology integration specialist, really follow up on our Foxborough online classroom that they'll be using a lot for work submission. They had those opportunities, they had opportunities for question and answer with WebEx, we had opportunities for question and answer with Teams, we had opportunities for that with their curriculum directors because obviously we've made adjustments to our curriculum given the situation that we're in to prioritize standards. And we did find that it was very different on our first day of professional development not to all be together at the high school. We did it virtually and we felt sort of that, that missed, we missed that whole school community feel. And we had it, but it wasn't exactly the same. So, we were sure to build in 15 minutes on the last day to come together as a school community. And as Nicole mentioned, I think it was Nicole, not Mary Claire, we played a game of Kahoot. And it was a great chance to model a tool that teachers can use with their students virtually, but it was also a chance for everybody to reflect on the week, to take a break from all the stress and anxiety and to have fun together as a school community. Because we all have to remember that even though this is stressful, we still have to smile, we still have to laugh, and we still have to remember that, you know, this, everything's gonna be okay. We're gonna get there, we're gonna get there together as a team because we're a team. And we had a trophy and it was a great opportunity for people to just say, okay, we really love being part of the Foxborough Schools community, we learned a ton, and we left on a happy note. So, the feedback was really outstanding from our staff. People, I think, felt that they got off on the right foot to start the beginning of the year. They felt that they had adequate time, not only to learn these new tools, and you'll see there was quite a variety of things, but also to just process them and to try them and apply them. And we did create an outcome document that showed what were the, what were the goals of this PD so that people, as they went through, could check off, okay, I've accomplished this, I've accomplished this. And it was categorized by the different things that we mentioned in terms of safety and building facilities and technology. And we also, one of the things we talked about at School Committee quite a bit in the past was, we had given the, all the staff guidance at the different levels about streamlining our technology tools. So, it was really an opportunity for some teachers who said, well, you know, I used to use this, but the district really wants us to use this tool now for this purpose. And it was really a chance to get proficient at those tools before we started the year and really get their questions answered so that they would feel good about using them. It's not gonna be perfect, but we, we know that we're moving in the right direction and that people left feeling like, okay, this is good and I have the right amount of support. So, I just want to thank the teachers and everybody who participated in professional development. We had many teacher-led sessions, we had administrator-led sessions, the department heads did a lot of work, curriculum directors did a lot of work, building administrators, nurses, everybody. It was all hands on deck. And the teachers were so engaged, they were very excited to be back. And they came not only with their questions, but with their enthusiasm, and we're seeing it already in the classrooms. So, overall, just a great, successful 10 Days of PD. The 10 Days is a lot, by the way, and I hope we never have to do that again.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is a lot, but simultaneously, I, it feels like it was 100% absolutely necessary.
I agree.
And I would imagine that, and what I've heard from faculty is that, thank goodness we had the 10 days.
Yes.
And all of this framework and the learning and setting of the pedagogy is, is, is so vital. It just means the to-do list is different and perhaps a bit longer, but the work continues. So, thank you for setting them up on the right path.
Well, I have to say, a lot of the thank you goes to the feedback we got from parents and from staff, from our spring experience and things that they know they needed to learn and improve upon. So, that really helped shape and guide what we needed to do. So, that was all really helpful.
Anyone else?
This, just, everything that we got in our packets is just so thorough and so impressive. I, I, I can see this 10 Days was a lot of, a lot of very hard work, but a lot of good, important training and, and information for our teachers and our staff, so.
And one thing I, it's that you didn't see here because we actually did an update, we did a lot of updates as the days went on, but Mr. Michael Azak, our new Director of Student Services, he had previously worked with Dr. Lisa Decker. She's out of the University of Florida. She's the, she's renowned in her work on universally designed instruction and co-teaching. And she did a session for us on universally designed instruction and in a remote environment, which we had Friday morning for people to opt into. We had 75 of our staff members attend that session as well, and it was just fantastic. And she just, she did it for us because she, she cares about the kids. So, that was amazing and great benefit to our district. So, thanks to Miss, Mr. Michael Azak for connecting us with her.
I, I wanted to touch on that, you said one thing late in your presentation there, which I think is worth repeating. You had mentioned very clearly that where we are today and what was done in this preparation for the school year was informed by the practice of the spring. That's critical for the public to know, that the teachers really brought to the table this year experiences, the trials and tribulations of, of the spring, right, right forward to here to make, to make a change and bring about change. And I think it's absolutely key with the, the depth of, the depth of everything that we've seen here. We are fortunate to see the documents and some of them, but the depth and the comprehensive nature of this is huge. But bringing that information forward, I think, is, is a great thing for the public to know, because I think that's what you hear from parents. You know, this experience was this in March or April or May, but we're using that to grow and to get better here in September.
Right.
And I think that's really important. I'm glad you said that. I'm glad you mentioned that as well. So, thank you. Any other questions?
I just, I will say the same thing I said to Mary Claire and Nicole. I'm just really proud to be associated in some way, shape, or form with Fox, with the Foxborough Public Schools. I've, I've said this all along, I think your approach has been methodical and thorough and considerate of all the different things. And I think what you're seeing now is all of that hard work, you know, is turning into as positive experience as it can be for everybody involved, the students, the faculty, the parents, everybody. So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Well done. Thank you to all your staff.
Absolutely.
It's well deserved. Brent, yeah?
This is not a question, it's just more of a, a comment, also just to say thank you to our families who are helping shepherd our kids through this. Because in the same way, a kid's first day in the building, it's surrounded by helping adults and upperclassmen who are also in the building to help shepherd those kids to the right place at the right time. And parents are fulfilling that role in, in, in a lot of, in, in a lot of cases or, you know, caregivers. And just to thank them for that and continue being patient with it because the kids will get it. And just, and I like what you said, Dr. Berdus, is that anytime you're gonna go to a full school, full remote session, you know, on any of the Wednesdays, there's a lot of bumps in the road and a lot of, you know, 10 or 15 ways to get into a different technology if you're using a particular piece of hardware, if your cookies are enabled or not, or if you're already logged into some other account or not. And finding all those ways in to access the curriculum, those things get ironed out. It may take a week or two to get them ironed out, but just to continue to encourage families and students to have patience, because you'll get it. You'll get it.
Great. Well said, thank you. I think next on, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a back-to-school health update. We have Ms. Jennifer Rosenberg here with the health update as well as the flu clinic. So, thanks so much.
Thanks for having me.
I'm sure you've had a busy time prepping as well.
We made it seven days. No, we, I actually honestly don't think the start could have gone better than it has. Just the staff, the students kinda floating around, everyone's doing a phenomenal job following all the safety protocols that we had in place. So, like, I think all the hard work that was done behind the scenes, the teachers, everything, like Dr. Berdus has said, just seeing the smiles even under the mask, you saw it in their eyes, they were happy to be back. So, I just have a few updates. I just wanted to let everyone know about the flu clinic that we did have the week before school started. I, I feel like the turnout was, was awesome. We had over 300 vaccinations given to families in Foxborough with our partnership in CVS and over 150 staff members were vaccinated. So, with that being said, there was such a great need, we had some people reach out asking if we could possibly do an evening hour. So, we booked October 13th, it's a Tuesday evening from 5:00 to 8:00, and that'll be at the high school gymnasium. So, stay tuned, there'll, there'll be some more information coming on that. As far as COVID update, I have to say, the families have been so amazing. Our nurses have been fielding phone calls, so I know that they're doing that self-checklist every morning with the symptoms. So, they're calling us and asking, what should I do? And they've been really receptive to our responses. So, I think that's gonna help us in the long run, just the buy-in for that. The students are doing really well with the masks, walking in the hallways, just like everyone's following the rules. They're staying apart. I hope they're hand washing, I haven't, you know, I, I see them all come in, they're doing their sanitizing.
I've seen them hand washing and a lot of sanitizing.
And then they're, they're definitely wearing the masks and social distancing. One of the things that has come up, just the travel advisory, and I'm not sure if everyone's aware of it, so we, it's come up a couple of times, just families traveling out of state. So, I, I think we maybe should put that back up on our website so parents are aware. There are certain states that if they do travel, that their, their student would be required to have a test prior to coming back to school. And the states are always changing, so we have to just stay up on that. And we ask that families, just let us know if they're gonna be traveling to one of those states so that we can follow up with that. The rule is, they have to have a negative test at least three days prior to coming back or right when they come back to Massachusetts. So, that's, we can, we can add that. I tried to add it to the Health Services website on, on our, our district page. We also ask parents, mask wearing, especially in the younger grades, the masks are getting a little soiled, so just make sure, remember to wash it when you see it's soiled or dirty. I have talked to Tom Kedman every day, he's my new best friend. We talk a lot about the prevalence rate in Foxborough. And again, it's just a testament to the, the community itself. They're really taking this seriously. We only have 11 current cases right now. Our prevalence rate is .05%. I know we talked, Dr. Berdus and I have talked a lot about what is gonna be that tipping number that would make us go full remote, and there's actually unfortunately not like a hard and fast number or a percentage. Tom and I talked a little bit today about it, and I know there's been a 3% number sent, Tom and I talked a little bit today about it, and I know there's been a 3% number sent, um, thrown around, 5%. I think to, talking with him today, definitely if we got closer to that 3%, we would have conversations, but we would have to look at the big picture. Like, what, what are those numbers? Who are those numbers? I don't think it's, it's not as simple as, like, a concrete number. But I think working together, which we had that collaboration from the start, has helped. Just even Tom talking to other local districts, they're not in the same, the same boat we are. So, I think we're, we're really fortunate here.
Nice to be back in the green.
It's been a total team game, and I, I feel honored to be part of it. So, any questions as far as the health update?
I think the only other thing to mention is, you know, some of the questions that come if, um, let's, let's be honest. It's not a matter of if. It's a matter of when, if we end up having a case. And the question, will parents know? Absolutely. We will notify, we will notify parents. If there is a positive case that takes place in a classroom, we are six feet and we know a close contact is within six feet, but that's why we're six feet. But at the same time, we would notify parents to let them know, if, if we had a case, that there was one, if they were considered close contact, we'd let them know that as well. So, I think that's, that's important. Letters would go out from the school principal, from any school, if that were to take place for that classroom. And if they were considered a close contact, those would be phone calls to those, to those families ahead of time. So, just want to make sure that people do know that if, if that happens, that we will inform our families.
Right. And we had talked about, um, you know, we're doing all this, the six-foot distancing, the hand washing, the mask wearing. And the definition of a close contact is someone within that six-feet distance for greater than 15 minutes. In a high school classroom, may look different than an elementary classroom. So, if we do have a positive case, we would do a thorough investigation of what that classroom looked like prior to sending out those letters, talk to the teacher, kind of get a page. And we would definitely err on the side of caution. Anyone that we thought, because it's a cumulative 15 minutes. It's not just 15 minutes in a row. You can step, like, you can't go 14 minutes, step back, and then it resets. It's, it's over a course of a day. So, we would definitely be more conservative in that way. And, uh, one of the other thing that has come up this week is if, if someone does have to go get tested for whatever reason, if they, or they just feel comfortable, they cannot come back to school until those, those results are negative. You can't come back if you're considered a close contact, but if you just decided to go get tested because you just would feel better, you need, you need to stay out of school until those negative results. So, it's come up in other communities, and I just thought it would be something to mention. I mean, I think it makes sense, but you just don't know. So, um, I think that's important to mention, too. But yeah, we've definitely, I think the transparency, and I think part of the, what the start of school, the parents calling, that's, that's a good sign. I think everyone is really being transparent about this because they want to do the right thing. They don't want to send their kids to school sick. And that's really important. That's like the fourth piece. You know, we, we talked about hand washing, wearing our mask and social distancing. But the fourth important piece is not going to school when you're sick. And I think they've done an amazing job. And I, I, our teachers, too. Our teachers are really kind of doing that self-checklist every morning. They're stopping in. They're just, they want, they don't want to be there, and they don't want to give anyone, you know, get anyone else sick, so. But with that being said, we also are seeing some common colds. We're seeing a little fever virus going around. So, there are definitely other viruses. And we knew this was going to happen. It happens every September. When we all got together, there's a little strep throat. So, this, this isn't, this isn't news. We're not shocked by this, but just so people are aware, there's other things going around, which just complicates things, but we'll get through it. We'll get through it.
Brent?
Back to the flu, and now that you mentioned sniffles and other viruses and things of that nature. What kind of timeline are you looking at in terms of starting to condense the list of kids that ha, you know, haven't self-reported being vaccinated, you know, ahead of that stated deadline?
Right. They have until the 31st of December.
Correct.
I'm thinking probably by the end of November, we'll start compiling lists in our schools to kind of get those lists out and just send out notices as reminders so that they have that full month of December to get either to a clinic or contact their pediatrician. I'm thinking that just, and then they have the week of, uh, winter break to try to kind of, and then we'll go from there. We, um, we, we, we do it every year anyway with our, with our T-DAT vaccination, not with the Newman and DePaco requirement. So, we, we are used to kind of like running our reports and checking to see who's compliant and who's not. So, it's just another different vaccine.
And then how, how, how's hay fever season been going? I mean, have you, have you been seeing that as well?
And that's another, a lot of allergies. But the one thing I will say about allergies, people that have them know their symptoms. So, they're aware, like, nope, these are my allergy symptoms. COVID, although they're similar on the page, when you feel it, it's, it's different. So, I think that helps a little bit.
Just on the travel advisory with the Thanksgiving, still in the distance, but coming up. Are we planning on, or are you planning on, uh, someone planning on reminding everybody what the situation is? And, because people do travel over the holidays and stuff?
Right. I think that would be, maybe we could send out something right before Thanksgiving, just as a reminder.
I think it's going to be an ongoing all the time. I mean, when you've got long weekends that are coming in, it's a conversation in buildings, and it's, it's up on our, on our page, talking about the states that change. But it's, it's just going to be part of our dialogue that we're going to have to have as, as ongoing.
Well, and if I may, I think it just points to the, the community responsibility, that it's, it is everyone's duty to follow the rules. And, and as we've seen with some of our neighboring communities, if, this train can go off the tracks really quickly if people are not responsible, and people are not responsible for themselves or their own children. Everybody has to do their part, or we aren't, we will not succeed. So, we want to succeed. You're all doing everything possible to make sure that our kids are succeeding with the helps part in the schools. But as a community, we have to do our parts. If your kids are playing sports on the weekend, you have to follow the rules there. If your kids are socializing with their friends, you need to know who they're with and, and, you know, keep track of how large their gatherings are and keep them small. You know, it, it is, we are all in this together. I don't think we can say that too many times at this point. You guys are doing a wonderful job, but it doesn't work unless we, parents and we, community members, keep doing our part.
Absolutely. Well said, Tina.
Any other comments? I, I would just like to echo that. I, I think we are, as a community, in this together. The success of our school system and our education program is because all of our students and parents engage in it every day, every year, and that's the success of our education program. This is no different. This is just no different. And I think what we have to be is, we have to be attentive to that. Probably different than we, anyone, any one of us has, right? So, so we need it. We don't change the metrics. We, we don't change the metrics here in the town of Foxborough, right? And so, if five college students come back from out of state, that's problematic and, and, and difficult. We could have very, very quick issues. So, you know, we're, we're all in this together. We're all in for the success of everyone. So, let's keep our eye on the ball, right? Thank you so much.
Yeah. I, I was just going to say is that what I've been impressed with is that the kids themselves, and, and I'm saying older kids. I'm, I'm not as sure with elementary. You know, one of my concerns was the kids themselves being nervous being in the school. And, you know, one of the comments that, you know, I'm seeing is that the classes are really small, that, you know, the lunch is definitely a different experience, but the, there's not nervousness, which I think is a testament overall to all the plans that are in place. And, you know, that's really good. And what I'm starting to see is kids really making comments about some of the silver linings that are coming out of all of this. And I, what I mean by that is that they are getting, when they're in school with the teachers, instead of a class of 15, 20, or more, they might be in a class of only eight. And so, you know, that, looking at some of the positives sometimes, we're at that time where that's really great for them to be able to focus in on. And it's the same with really kind of seeing how people are stepping up. And I, I'm thrilled to hear that parents are calling and asking the questions because that is just so important. Because all of us, you know, no matter, you get a sniffle and you start thinking and, you know, it, it's really good to be able to reach out. So, thank, thank you for all that you're doing. And that makes me very happy to hear that.
You know, it's easy to do your job when you have the support. And I have to say, this town, it has so much support everywhere. I, the teachers have been amazing. Like, I just can't say enough about the staff, the teachers, the, because down to the, not down to the custodian, but the custodians who have been a huge part of this whole. They are working, everyone is working so hard for these students. And the students see that. Like, they see, they, the, um, they know there's, the, the teachers aren't nervous, so they're not nervous. So, it's been, it's been, it's really, everyone has just really stepped up. I knew they would. And it just, this, this town is, is, from top to bottom, it's awesome. A great place. People are lucky to have, and part of it's luck, but part of it's also, I think, just the way things fall. But, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your work, and thank you for all the, everyone in each building, you know, serving your health needs and everything. So, thank you. Well done. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Mr. Pearson, before we go on, I actually had a question I forgot to ask earlier. No, or, back when we were with Dr. Berdos and Dr. Mello and Mr. Yuckna. Two things that we didn't talk about, maybe this is a segue into the next piece. How is bus ridership working? And, uh, as in the custodial pieces? Because I, I have gotten the same feedback just externally, that they, that people feel very safe in the buildings, but are they, feel like they're still able to absorb all the extra work and everything? So, like I said, maybe that's a segue to the next piece, but.
Well, I, I think we all took turns of being at different buildings to, to watch the buses come in and go out the first couple of days. And, you know, again, I got on at the Borough and saw how the students were. They were all very good. They were all sitting in their, in their locations that they were supposed to be. They all had their masks on. I spoke to the bus drivers. They were, you know, very pleased with the reactions of the kids and what they were actually, you know, able to do. I think between the combination of, of more parents deciding to drive students for their own personal reasons, which is fine, we're actually running not as tight on some of the buses that we were nervous about. So, you know, we're, we're well with underneath the, the 27, 26 passengers on the bus, which has worked out fine for us. And I, quite honestly, I think the transportation side of it's gone very well. The custodial side, um, you know, actually, transportation custodial and a bunch of things. I think maybe for the, the next meeting we have, we'll, we'll get into a little bit of the budget side of what's going on. But, um, you know, the custodians between our, our sub-custodians and our regular custodians working overtime, we've been able to fill that void of having the extra staff on during the day for cleaning, whether it's the cafeterias, the bathrooms, you know, touchpoints, that type of thing. And so, I think everybody's done an excellent job that way. And quite honestly, they've all taken it very seriously. So, I think that's, you know, we've all had meetings with our different department heads to really make sure that everybody understands the consequences here. And that is, we, we stay in as long as we do it right. So, I think, I think I'm comfortable that, from our side, that it's, it's moving the way it should be.
I would also say, and I know a lot of people worked a lot of extra hours to make this happen, but in the transportation office, they, making this hybrid work, especially with the AM and PM at the middle school. I mean, they put in a lot of extra time to make it happen with the cohorts. And I just, they, I just want to publicly thank them because that was a lot, and they did a great job. And it was tricky.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
That was a good segue. I thought that was a great segue. Colliers International HVAC report.
So, um, you know, as we promised, basically, we hired Colliers to, to do the analysis. They are an engineering firm, and they came through and went through the five buildings. Initial marks, as I think I told you, were very good as far as the maintenance of our equipment in general. They were kind of surprised to see, I think, it as good as it was. They noted, as they were going through the process, they did note, you know, a number of different things that they found, whether it was a control issue, a motor that didn't seem to be operating properly or not. And so, this, this, that was actually three versions of this report. One that came out in the 28th of August, one on the 14th, and then the 17th. And the reason for that was, what I was asking them to do for my sake was every time they had something, they could give it to us so we could start working on it rather than wait until the final report was done. In the first part of it, it was really just what equipment issues did they find and they see. And you could see by my action list that, first of all, there weren't that many of them. Especially when you think, I think in the total thing, we were, we had probably about six motors that had gone bad, and mostly on exhaust fans. We have close to 200 of them in the district. So, we're always going to lose a motor somewhere at some point in time. We're always checking for those. So, that didn't surprise us, although we had, thought we had caught almost all of them going through the process. But by the time they were done with the mechanical inspection, our team had basically fixed everything. We had to wait for two motors to come in on a special order, and, and they made it in on the 14th, just as school was starting, we got those in. A lot of the things were some control adjustments, which we did make very quickly because most of our systems are electronic controls that we can deal with. And then the final thing that they had to do, which is what the 17th report on, was basically to test the airflow. What you're looking for under the ASHRA standards is at least four exchanges an hour. Our minimum exchange was just under six, and that was in a room that was a 16, um, 100-square-foot room, you know, with only two unit vents in it. But our, our, more of our standards were in the 10 to 12. So, we were up to three times more than what the standard calls for. And, and that's kind of impressive when you consider the fact that three of our buildings are older buildings with older units. And it is a testament, I would say, to facilities in basically really working on that equipment over the last, you know, number of years, that they've really done a great job getting it all up to work. It's working the best it possibly can. I know, you know, Jeff Whitehouse was a, a good find for us as a plumber, but he also was, gave us that resource to be able to work with the other guys to, to take all this equipment apart when it wasn't working right and rebuild it as we needed to and put it back together. So, the whole team basically worked through all of the buildings to do that. So, the overall of this report in, in general is, all the repairs that need to be made were made. All of the, which were minor in, in scope, when you look at, we're 550,000 square foot buildings, and we're, you know, hundreds of motors, hundreds of units, you know, going through. Don't forget, we have 232 classrooms alone that we're trying to deal with on a regular basis. So, I was very pleased with the report. It was, it was what I had expected it to be based on what they've been doing over the last few years. The one issue that is outstanding is the MERV-13 filters, which they did confirm we can use on the bigger equipment, which is our rooftop units and stuff. They've been on order since the 26th of August, expected in within a couple of weeks. And as soon as they come in, we will install those. We have also bought HEPA filters for any rooms that we had that were inside rooms that did not have the direct exterior venting or exhausting. And there was only, you know, you know, well, it was a little over a dozen of those in total, but those have been all put in place. And we put them in every single nurse's station as a secondary backup. All of the schools now have their own, um, what do you want to call them? Isolation rooms, which they didn't have before. We built a couple of them over the summertime. The Taylor School has two that never had. The Hearn has a second one from where it was. And even the, the Borough in its new arrangement as a temporary section has a, an isolation room of its own. So, I think we took all of, of the guidance that we were getting from Jen and everybody else as to what we needed to do, and were able to enact it before school had to start. The 10 days did help us, obviously, gave us a little bit more time to complete, as the PD was going on, to complete stuff. But by the time the teachers really came into the building, we really did have most of our stuff up to, up to snuff on that. So, you know, unless there's any questions, you've all had a chance to, to have the report. But if there's any questions on it, I'd be happy to answer them. But, you know, overall, I, I would say we got very high marks for, you know, maintenance of our equipment and being ready for this type of a thing.
I, um, I'm sorry. I don't have a question. Not a question, not full of questions, I put a comment again. I haven't counted in the report, but I did note how many times it is referenced either how well-maintained or very well-maintained the equipment is. So, going back to where you started the conversation, thank you to everybody who is involved in that effort because I think that that is reflected in the outside party's assessment as well.
I, I think this is a philosophy that started a number of years ago, which really, the schools had very high marks for maintaining, because it's cheaper to maintain than it is to have to rebuild. And, and that's one of the reasons that our facility department became the town's facility department, because the town did not have a vehicle in which to take care of the town hall or the joint public safety building. And we already had one. Obviously, with a little bit of staff augmentation, we were able to basically give them the same level that we have. And, and I will say, Tony and Carl have done an excellent job with their staff, and their staff have really stepped up to understand that that philosophy is really the philosophy that the town embraces. They're, they're willing to financially give us the support annually to make sure we keep it where it's supposed to be. And in doing that, again, I think you save the town a lot of money down the road in what your cost start to maintain these buildings, you know, in a safe manner. So, again, I give kudos to them because it was a lot of work for them over the summer as well to get this all back together and make sure we were 100%.
Oh, Brent, can you?
Brent?
To follow up on what you said before my few, just few questions, there are districts not too far from us that, uh, you know, couldn't even entertain a hybrid model because of the. state of their HVAC systems and histories of deferred maintenance, or, and/or lack of transparency on what the state of the HVAC systems are, such they weren't able to secure an agreement with the teachers, because the teachers didn't have the competence that, or at least have the information in hand, that the buildings were in fact safe. So I thank you very much for that. I think it's just what we do in this town, but some people would say it's gutsy to put out a report like this, but it's simply what you do, and I appreciate that. So thank you for your transparency, because I've known people in other districts who can't get their hand on a report like this. So thank you for that. My questions are, and they're more small, I'm over the moon impressed with the air exchange rates and the level of maintenance that has been afforded to all these buildings. One, two areas that I didn't see the exchange rates for were Borough and Taylor. Are those numbers available? I just assumed that they were, I assumed that they were above the four or at...
They were actually, well, the Borough is problematic. It's running at the same as the IGO, as is the Taylor, but the Borough is now running on two different systems. So it's running on its new systems, which are even higher, to be honest with you, but they're not fully engaged, if you will, from the perspective of they haven't been all the way through the test of the initiations of them and stuff. So it was a little hard for them to be able to go in, even though we know it's effectively, they're probably on the level of the high school and the middle school at the Borough right now for half of the building, just because that's the capabilities of that equipment, and it's the design of the equipment. The Taylor, they did do a venting test, and it was the same as the IGO. I'm not sure why they didn't put it in the report, but we can get that. But there, again, all three of those buildings had very similar aged univents, which is really where your control is. The one thing I will say, and they even made the comments in their report, that you have to be cognizant of, is right now, we've been able to run at 100% open dampers, which means we're bringing in all the fresh air that we possibly can. We've allowed teachers to open windows to bring in all the air you can. Obviously, as the temperature really starts to drop, we have two things we have to be very cautious of, and we're going to continue to adjust and play with it over time to get to the right level. But we typically, even in the middle of the winter, would run at probably, you know, 25 to 30% fresh air. When you run at 100% fresh air, what you're doing is you're requiring the heating system to basically, you know, heat 100%, so it could be a 10-degree outside air that you want to get up to 70 degrees. Boilers would have to run at unbelievable rates to even come close to doing that, and they really can't. The other concern you have to have, if you ran at 100% in the middle of the winter, is that you could freeze the univents, which are on the outside walls, which do have water going through them. So fortunately, in the bigger buildings, they're all electronically controlled, so we can pull down the dampers at night, as an example, when we don't have people in the building, you don't have to worry about the fresh air as much. We can open them up at 6:00 in the morning before anybody shows up and get them up to a higher level. But we'll play with that to see, you know, whether, you know, 50, 60, you know, 70% works and we can still maintain temperatures and still, you know, it will be a little bit colder, I'm gonna, I'm gonna warn, if we're gonna try to keep as much fresh air as possible. So we'll be a little colder this year, and I would encourage parents to make sure that they layer their kids so that they can handle that. But I think we're gonna be doing that, you know, in the guise of trying to make it, you know, as safe as possible by keeping the fresh air coming into the buildings.
And then my follow-up question was mostly just for my own just understanding. How do you go about testing the, those airflow rates?
So there's actually, it's a machine that you actually put on top of each univent, and it basically does a suction test against the air that's being pushed by the machine. And it has a whole calculation, it does, it basically goes through the whole math on it and gives you some numbers, and then you have to do, based on the size of the room, then you calculate, you know, your exchanges from there. But we were kind of expecting it to be, as long as the equipment was running well, to be in these higher rates, just because the equipment was sized for 1,000 to 1,200 CFMs. And that, it means it was really pushing, or meant to be pushing, a lot of air through these rooms. So obviously, if the equipment wasn't working to its capabilities, then that's really where you get into the trouble. But, you know, I really do, I think that's, that's where we're in good shape, and we have spent a lot of time on that over the years and a lot of money to make sure we stay there.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on Brent's point about transparency, if anybody is interested in reading this very detailed report, it is up on our Foxborough Public Schools website if you...
On the COVID page.
Click on the COVID page. It's in the upper right-hand corner on the top, so just, because I agree with everything you said about that, Brent. You know, it's good to have all this information out there. People have questions. The answers are right here.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. That was excellent. That's what we needed to hear. Wonderful. Next is student activities accounts, right?
Yes, sir.
Approval of our student activity account.
So this is an annual requirement of the school committee under state law. So as you know, the student activity accounts basically are either different organizations or groups that work within each of the two bigger schools, the high school and the middle school. I've given you a list of what the standard activities are, and most of these are under contract with the teachers' union as well, as far as who supervises them. You can see there's obviously a very large list under the high school level. On the middle school, it's a much smaller list. And basically, you have to vote to approve, effectively, the authorization of these to go forward for the FY21 fiscal year, our school year. And, you know, like I said, it's just, it's a standard requirement. You'll note there's a few that have changed, and that typically is why you'll see this list every year. They may have run something for a couple of years that the, you know, there was a dwindling interest in it, and, but yet something else came up that they, they felt stronger about, and the kids wanted to have an opportunity to do, and so they would replace one with another, which they do have the right to do. We have a couple that are flexible accounts, if you will, to do that, so.
I'm just curious what the Foxborough Medical Club is? That one's, that one's new, or at least I don't remember that one.
That's the one through MedLife.
MedLife?
Yeah. There's a, I, my understanding is that basically it was a, like a training thing towards the medical field that kids were interested in, so...
Perhaps more popular now?
Yeah.
Hard to say.
From our Project Lead the Way medical detectives, we've got people interested.
100% pipeline. 100% pipeline.
Nice. Get it on the green screen.
It's a little plug.
Yeah, go ahead, Brent. What is the current thinking on clubs? I mean, I'm glad we're gonna keep trying to do them, but in terms of timing, involvement, are there any clubs which are, yeah, less likely to run?
I think that, you know, the ones that can run virtually, we know how important they are for students to be able to still have that connection, and if they can run virtually, many of them will. I think there'll be some that we'll see that maybe don't because of just the nature of the club.
But again, without your authorization, they wouldn't even have the option if things changed as...
I'd rather, yeah, to my mind, I'm just speaking, I'd rather y'all have the option.
Of course.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
No.
If there are no questions, I'd like to entertain a motion from someone to approve the listed student activity accounts for Foxborough High School and the Ahern Middle School for FY21.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Right, Brent, Brent moved by Brent and seconded by Tina.
You gotta be faster, Michelle.
You're kidding? That was a lazy motion. I just, I just, I just took what you said, like...
Any further discussions? All in favor for that motion as stated? 5-0. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Yukna, for that presentation as well. Next on the agenda is the Bi County Collaborative, BIKO Quarterly Report from June 2020.
So you have in your packet the quarterly report. I think that one of the things here to note is that Dr. Gruber, this was her last quarterly report. She was our director for special education seven years ago, when she left us to go be the executive director at BIKO. And she retired, and Jean Sullivan, who was the director of pupil personnel, and Norton is the new executive director for BIKO. I worked for about 16 years with Jean before, so it was really nice to see her move into that position, and I know that she will continue to do great things for BIKO. They're a wonderful organization. The quarterly report here, that even despite the March 16 closure, their enrollment continues to be stable. They've actually, they're up, we just had a meeting this last week, so their enrollment is even up from last year. And their summer program was remote, so this was the June quarterly report. So they were fully remote for their summer services, and the professional development that they had from their topics over the years, you know, mirror many of the things that we do as well when we think about social, emotional learning and the technology aspects and any of the ways of collecting data and managing that efficiently. So it really mirrors a lot of the things that we do, but it is nice to see Jean Sullivan. Welcome to the BIKO organization, and we'll continue to get these quarterly reports from them, and I'll share them with you at future meetings.
Wonderful. Thanks for sharing. Thanks for sharing. Very important opportunity for our school system and our students to have access to this and our families. Any questions about...
Not on BIKO. I had meant to ask one of Dr. Berdus and Mr. Yukna about, you had mentioned that maybe in future meetings you'd wanna take, have us take a look at potential budget implications of custodial materials and stuff like that? Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. We've made it to the end. Other matters, 10 minutes early.
Pretty impressive.
10 minutes before planned.
We're gonna leave this taxes. There's a box out there. It's in the front.
Thank you.
I actually have something for other matters.
Yes, please.
So I'm gonna take my mask off just so that I can be heard. She didn't work for Foxborough Public Schools, but she has had an impact on so many of our students. Mrs. Rosetti, our children's librarian at the Boydin, retired yesterday after 31 years of service there, and I just wanted to wish her well. You know, I think I spent many, 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 many days, hours at, at the children's library with my boys when they were small and doing all the programs, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to wish her well and thank her for everything she's done for our Foxborough kids. She's just a wonderful woman, and best of luck in her retirement.
Well, yeah, well done. Great, that's great. Anything else under other matters? Yes?
Just wanna mention that where things are very different, our open houses are different this year. So if you go online with the elementary schools, you can see the videos and all that they've done. And I think that it's always nice to learn about the teachers and to see, and it's different this year where it's a video, but the other thing too is you get a window into the classroom. So I know, Michelle, you were talking about really the number of desks in a classroom. So when you see them really spaced out by watching the videos of the teachers, you see the classroom, you hear about all of the safety precautions that are in place, the individual learning tools that every student has. So I think it's really informative. I've watched a number of them, and all of the effort that they put into them has really just been fantastic, where it's been something very different. The middle schools will be on Thursday of this week, and the high school is next week. So again, they're virtual, and they're being shared out, but I would, I would encourage people to take time to go and to watch some of them and to be able to see what the classrooms look like with the spacing, with the safety precautions and protocols that are in place. And just kudos to all of our teachers and staff who've been really creative in putting those videos together.
Thank you. Yeah, well said. Any other, other matters?
Yeah, just one quick thing, and I know it's gone out from Janice Watts, but food service has kind of moved over to using the federal funding for all lunches to be free for students who want to take advantage of that. And this obviously only goes through 1231 based on the FEMA requirements, but it is an opportunity for any student, you know, who's in need or just wants to participate in the school lunch program, to be able to do it for nothing at this time, and it's being paid for by the federal government, not by Foxborough taxpayers, although we all pay for it eventually, I guess.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, I know Janice has been posting on Facebook, so all the details are on, she's marvelous about updating the Foxborough Schools Nutrition Facebook page, and it gets shared out by a number of people, but there's food pickup at the Ahern, and I'm, the days are escaping me right now.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. So if you want it for the days that the students are not in school, you know, you can pick up for those days. So anyway, just thought I'd mention that as well.
Thank you. Is there another? Nope. Well, I'd like to close with another other. So first of all, I'd like to thank all the teachers and administrators in our school system for opening up a great school year. We've spent weeks and weeks talking about all the work that's been done. You've articulated the work very well by every single person involved, so thank you. Thank you to the teachers for being part of such a unique and challenging school year. Extra days of preparation in advance, and also understanding the full gamut of getting back as soon as possible so we could start on the 14th. So I think the teachers did us a great service in this town. And finally, to you as the school committee members, I think you're very courageous yourselves, thoughtful, and put the time in to be ready for tough decisions. Opening a school, open up a school year by the school committee is always one of the most important things we can do and be prepared for that, and then throw in a little COVID on top of it, and throw in tough decision-making and difficult problems and challenges for families. So thank you all for being a part of really thinking it through, being engaged with it, and being attentive. Made a big deal, and it's a big deal how we opened our school system, so thank you all. Thank you all for tuning in tonight. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Brent.
Seconded.
Seconded by, yes, Michelle. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Good night.